Good morning. We're now called to order. Items from the public.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. State your name for the record, please.
I'm Chair Burton, Director of Parks and Rec in Martinsburg in Berkeley County. Just wanted to come here before you guys this morning as a reminder that we're still hoping to get the commission to consider voting on the parks levy request that we made back in May 29th. I've made multiple requests via email and haven't been able to get on the agenda, so I just wanted to come before you today. Just remind you that, you know, it's definitely not asking for money the commission doesn't have to give, but we are asking to bring this issue to the public and let them decide on it. We recently looked at last year's, the wrap-up of the fiscal year. We had $4.8 million in expenses. We received $597,000 from the county commission in a combination of hotel motel and the allocation that you gave us. And that's just for operation. I know there was all system money given towards capital improvement at Spring Mills Park. That said, we need help. We're going to have a million dollar plus deficit this year. It's July and we really, we've been, there's been some talk of some additional funding, but we, there's nothing set in stone, nothing in writing yet. So we're still trying to figure out this fiscal year and we're almost in August already. We can deal with that. We'll do whatever we have to do to keep going. What I want to do is get ahead of this. I want to get this snowball that keeps building. I want to get ahead of that and have a better plan. And I believe the public should be involved with that and make a decision about the levy. That's it.
Very good, Joe. Thank you, Joe. We are aware of the struggle. We understand. And we're working on trying to resolve some of this without having to go the route that you want to go. We're working. And we've, we've met with the city. We've had discussions with them. And hopefully, we'll be able to do something jointly together to help with some of your operational needs. We understand that. We understand. So, thank you for coming in today.
Yeah. Just, I mean, so again, my, my request is just to have a vote on this issue. And if it's a no, it's a no, and we move on with other things. But that, that's what I'd like to have happen.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, sir. Any other items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir, move.
Second.
Been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Purchase order log. Anybody have any questions for Tracy? Okay. We have new internal budget revisions this week. Have changes status, have multiple. Hiring recommendations received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Ashley Schimpf as a drug screen tech with an annual salary of $39,812 effective 8/4/25. Hiring recommendations received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Danny Delier, Jr. as a part-time driver with a compensation rate of $17.83 an hour effective 7/30/25. Hiring recommendation received from the Honorable Michelle Shoppert, Circuit Clerk for Annalise Carson Robertson, Robertson as a deputy clerk has an annual salary of $40,830 effective 8/11/25. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Liam McKee, Peer Recovery Coach to move from Recovery Resources, DRC, with no salary change effective 8/4/25. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Taylor Parker, Interim Community Service Specialist to move to permanent status with no salary change effective 8/4/25. Letter resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Monica Lewis, Telecommunicator 1 effective 7/16/2025. And a letter retirement received from the Honorable Rob Sheriff, Rob Blair, Sheriff for Karen Young, Tax Office Deputy Director effective 8/31/25. Approval amendments. Everybody was here for the July 17th meeting. A bond reduction has been presented by our engineer Doug Smith for Spring Mills, PUD Lot 11. Townhouse Rental BCP filed 2410-313 tied to 2410-312, 2303-115, and number 2306-0091. That's bond number 100755700. Bond release Cardinal Point Phase 5, I'm sorry, Section 5 Phase 2, lots 326 to 341, 420 to 431. That's final plat. BCP file number 2408-024254 tied to number 2209-263, and number 2204-114. That's bond number 10754740. Bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Section 1 Phase 3, lots number 342 to 357, 408 through 419. That's final plat. File number 048-18, and that's tied to number 2010-1, uh, -2762211-341, and 2211-345. And that's bond number 1005831502. Cardinal Point, Section 1 Phase 4, lots number 358 to 371, and 396 to 407 is final plat. File number 048-18 to number 2011338, number 2211-341, and number 2211-346. That's bond number 100542341. Bond reduction, Cardinal Point, Section 1 Phase 5, lots 10 through 42, 65 through 70, 95 through 97, 66 through 117, 182 to 185, 272 to 273, 304 to 308. That's final plat. File number 048-18, and that's tied to number 2011-352, 2211-342, and 2211-347. That's bond number 100557838. Engineering is making those recommendations. Anybody have any questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug. Appreciate, appreciate your work here. There's a lot of calculations going on there. Yeah. Yep. Okay. Well, thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sir, moved. Second.
Been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Next up is Larry Hess, the County Assessor. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Well, I got a Verandia stuff here today and wanted to bring it to you.
If you did.
First of all, I do have taxpayer error. First of all, we got seven of those I had to bring to you for, usually they don't take off the vehicle on their returns. And so we have to write them up as taxpayer error. So I have seven of those this morning. If you total them up, they come up to $1,494.34 for those seven.
Okay. Need a motion for the seven personal tax exonerations for taxpayer error?
I assume, Mr. President. Second.
It's been moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Aye. Posed three to one. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, for the real estate, personal property, I have a total of seven of those today. And for the reasons that's listed there, we had to correct those. They come up to $2,546.56 for those seven.
Okay.
Personal property.
All right. Need a motion to approve the seven personal tax exonerations in the amount of $2,546.56.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As have it.
Okay. So, from the next three pages I have here is, you know, when we, we do the Board of Equilization, we cut everything off at the end of the year. We can't change anything for the '25 tax bill. I mean, that's cut off. But through proofing and other things, customers coming in and we find the mistakes or whatever, this has been piling up since Board of Equilization. So it's like a couple months. It's not just something that happened in the last couple of weeks. But, so, we would have brought them all at one time. So I've got, I think I've got three pages of real estate exonerations we put together. And, and we, and I've got them separated in groups. This is Group 1, which is just real estate. And they're for, you know, a lot of things. Homestead exemptions didn't get applied in a wrong tax class, you know, that type of thing. There's, there's three pages of these. And I think I've got 22 of them. And out of those, for those 22 real estate exonerations accumulated over the last few months, they come up to $22,783.56. So that's a lot. But I mean, that didn't happen just in, you know, that's last several months.
This wasn't from last week moving forward. It's been collected.
They've been collected since the Board of Equilization, really.
So you, you want these all done individually, Larry?
Yeah, let's do them in groups. And now, you know, we've, we found these. So, what, what I've done is, a lot of these taxpayers didn't know that there was a mistake. So I had my staff send a letter out to all these people, showing them, some of them may have already paid their tax bill. I don't know.
Right.
So we sent a letter out to make sure that everybody knows that we did submit an exoneration on their bill, and they'll be getting another bill. So they'll know that if they paid it, it's going to be a credit, you know.
Like the city of Martinsburg, they got billed, but they shouldn't have gotten it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. There are several different reasons there, but, but we did notify these people. They, they are aware of the exoneration being submitted. So, but...
You have the amounts for each group then?
Oh. I do have, yeah, total, total for each group. I do.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. This, this first group for real estate is $22,783.56.
Yeah. Okay. Need a motion to approve Group 1, which includes 22 real estate exonerations for officer in an amount of $22,783.56.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it.
Okay. Second group we have is their farm applications that, for some reason, there was 15 of them that, that had mistakes or didn't get keyed for some reason, one reason or the other. But there's a total of 15 of those. So I separated those out. And they're on two different pages. And I think those come up to, give me a second here, $18,112.87
Very good.
For those.
Okay. Need a motion for Group 2, Group 2, for the 15 real estate tax exonerations and office error for the amount of $18,112.87.
So moved.
Been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. And Group 3?
Yeah, Group 3 is, and you will remember, because we dealt with Black Draft Distillery. We had a, I sent something to the State Tax Department for a ruling. And, of course, we had it, we always had it as commercial for the business part. And because when the ag tourism bill came out, that changed a lot of stuff that we didn't realize that the state was, that was their intentions to allow the farmers just to do pretty much anything they want to do on a farm. But the tax ruling came back on Black Draft, you remember, allowed them to continue with the lower tax Class II rate and still run a business, whether they're selling their products, or hats or shirts, or have weddings taking place out there or whatever. That ag tourism bill allows the farmers, according to the State Tax Department, and the ruling we got, allows them to do this. So, that's a big change across the state of West Virginia, actually. But we have four distilleries in Berkeley County. And, and they're all on a list from the State Tax Department as being part of the ag tourism bill. They, they recognize that. They, supposedly, they got to take people, they're supposed to take people out through their farms, show them how the farm works, and, you know, all that stuff, bring the people into the farm. Whether they do that or not, I don't know. But the ag tourism bill allows them to do that. But we have these four. So I went ahead and took the tax class split off of Black Draft. And we had to do it with the others also. So there's four of them. We, we had to change all four of them. And that's what these are here. With the exception of Paul Payne, he has a Christmas tree farm and, you know. And he does have a cell tower on his property, which we didn't take the split off of that. It didn't have anything to do with the farm. So we got those four I had to bring to you today. At that group, Group 3 is totaled up of $7,777.59.
Very good.
How many other ag tourism businesses are the others than the four distilleries?
That, that's all we have that I know. Now, interstate, you mean, or just?
No, in Berkeley County.
That's all I know. Just that.
What about the Staples at Arden out there? I thought it was ag tourism.
Who, Staples?
Staples at Arden, on Arden.
I don't have, it wasn't on the list. I don't know. I'll check into it.
They might not applaud for it. But ultimately, it's to bring tourism in. It's a farm, but it is, the, the goal is to bring tourists to West Virginia. So if they can use the farm for something else, to bring people into the state to visit, they get a tax break. That's basically what it is. It's not really about showing the farm. It's, it's more about bringing in tourism.
Yeah, exactly. I think they're taking advantage of it a little bit. There's a lot of, not this, not in this county, but in the other, some of the others.
Are they exempt on their product as well?
They're not exempt.
Or machinery and those type of things? Well, are they reduced on those things?
No.
Or just the property?
They're still, they're still taxed, but there's tax at the Class II rate, the low rate. We can't put the business, uh, Class III on it. We got to take those off.
The sales tax still exists, H. Right. Sales tax still there. But I mean, like equipment and things, yeah, that's, that's reduced as well, or just the property?
That'll probably come off because it's not considered a business.
And also, there's a, they fall under a different qualification for permitting, too.
Yeah.
The good thing is, you've got clarification from the State Tax Department. Moving forward, we shouldn't have those issues. And the different owners should not have to come in and complain about it. So, you know, at least we finally got a ruling.
We got a ruling. And that's what I was pushing for, because, you know, when that ag tourism bill came down the pike, we thought, well, we read it and looked at it, and we thought, well, yeah, I'm not sure what, you know. So I wanted to get a ruling. So I'm glad we did that with Black Draft. So, uh, we did get, we got something from the State Tax Department. Their intentions are to allow the farmers to do this. And, and that's, that's what the ruling said. So, but like I say, I think some of the, the counties are complaining. They have farmers that have rental properties on their, on their farms, and they're renting out houses and cabins. And they're, they're kind of taking advantage. I think that needs to...
They could buy it to Class II as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that's, you know, that's never been the case. You have rental property. Doesn't matter if you're a farmer or not. It's a class split. You need to pay the higher taxes. That's the way the law always, in the code always, you know. But this is a big change. But I think it needs to take, be, have another look at this bill. But it probably won't happen, so.
Very good. Okay. Have a total of 42. Is that all? Have you finished, Larry?
Uh, I don't know if I told you the total. Those four, $7,777.59 for those ag tourism lists of Group 3.
Okay. And you, you made that motion, correct?
No.
Oh, we haven't made a motion?
But I'll make a motion to accept the $7,777.59.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it.
And we also contacted these, sent a letter out to these, these people also, to make sure they are aware of those. End rate. The only thing I have left is a application for consolidation of two parcels to, for these people to get a tax bill, one tax bill for Lisa Keefe. She has two properties or parcels in Stone Lake subdivision in Mill Creek District, map 6A, parcel 63 and 64. We consolidated them together and need your approval so we can get her one tax bill.
Very good. Need a motion to approve the consolidation of properties for Lisa and Calvin Keefe?
So moved.
It's been moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you. Y'all have a good one.
Yes, sir. All right. Board of Meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Well, I thought I would have a busy week of words, but the two this week so far have been canceled. I have one tonight, museum board. I know that one won't be canceled. I intend to be there.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
Planning Commission meeting on Monday night. Wasn't too exciting. A little, little, some, few people come in with some complaints, but the commission, I think, did a good job working through that, trying to, the biggest thing that happens on the planning commission is people just don't understand the process, or they don't under, you know. We had one gentleman came in and said he bought a premium lot and was guaranteed that there would be new homes built behind him. Farm was sold. Homes were being built there. Just kind of a sales ploy. He was kind of upset. But just some communications on Face, I think Face 3 of Cardinal Point. But just your standard planning commission meeting. We had five public hearings, and there was people there from the public that spoke up, some in favor, some against. But all in all, it was a, a good meeting, and we was able to advance the projects that we needed to advance. And we had a quorum. That's been an issue with planning commission is getting people to show up and people that are on the commission not showing up. And, and so we struggle with quorum sometimes. So, but this week was a, was a good meeting. That's the only meeting I've had so far this week.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Keller?
Last Thursday, I spent time with the comprehensive plan meeting headed off by the Berkeley Group and Planning Commission staff and board members from the Planning Commission. Very informative, very good meeting. And I guess it's the first of five, right, Brian? So, last Friday, I attended the open house over at the Health Department, like several of you did. I was very impressed with the new facility. I think we have a facility there now that really gives us a... I think we have a facility there now that really gives a good first impression to visitors when they come in there to get service from the Health Department, and I think everyone I talked to on the staff seemed very pleased with the renovations, appreciate Gary, you and the staff, and Eddie's involvement in seeing that thing to fruition and getting it finished, so, it's a really nice addition for the community and for them. Tuesday evening this week, I had a sewer board meeting. Highlight of that meeting, there was a demonstration given by a gentleman from Red Zone, and Red Zone is a robotics firm out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and they were hired by the sewer district to do a study on the entire county system. It was a four million dollar cost, so, it was a lot of time, it took over a year, but I'd tell you, they have an assessment of the, of the system now that we've never had before, and they've identified where some issues are. But, they break this thing down under two scoring categories, the first one is structural, which is your piping and your manholes and your plants, we scored really high on that, and then the second one is operations and maintenance, and we scored really high on that as well. So, compared to other communities, similar sized population that we're serving and what our district has, they've come a long way in the last three or four years from where they were, and it's something that, you know, they can use internally, and as we add more lines and stuff, it'll be added into this program, and it makes Curtis' job a whole lot easier to address which issues need to be addressed first. So, I think, I think the sewer district is headed in the right direction. Following that, of course, we always have our stormwater meeting. I did discuss the LGAC, the LGAC, the Local Government Advisory Committee position for the Chesapeake Bay, I'm still in conversation with the state governor's office about that, and I may just go ahead and assume that role myself, but get, I want to get, I want to get the Norris boy, Zach Norris, involved, who is our MS4 permit coordinator in that as well, and have him attend the meetings along with me. And then yesterday, we had our senior services meeting yesterday afternoon, and we are looking for sponsors for our Senior Heroes Dinner, which will be in September, it'll be the second annual, and it's a fundraiser that started last year, and they netted over ten grand last year for the senior center, so, but other than that, the senior center finances are in good order, and they're in great shape, so. Oh, I have, sir, thank you.
Very good. And the Woods Resort Sewer Plant?
Plant. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, they're gonna try to open the plant and fire it off this coming week, so, certainly by mid-August, they'll be in full operation.
Good.
Full operation, and that, if you don't know, it was over a nine million dollar investment by the sewer district to build this new plant there, and it's getting fired off next week, so, it's exciting to get to that point.
Because the existing system was failing.
Dramatically.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, very good, thank you. I also attended the comp plan workshop with the Berkeley Group, and attended the open house at the Berkeley County Health Department, that's a nice addition for them, and will serve them well. We do have a new application for, from Chad Weinbrenner, to serve on Region Nine Planning Development. Chad, that's something you're interested in, I understand that you had served in, on that board previously, correct?
Yes, I really enjoyed my time on that board.
Are there currently openings on that board?
Two more, two more red lines down.
Okay, okay.
Yep, Sandy had to step down.
All right, well, and next, need a motion to appoint Brad Canaryam, who will be the city of Martinsburg's new fire chief, to the Berkeley County 911 Advisory Board. Need a motion to appoint Chief Canaryam.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And do you have a letter of resignation received from Sandy Hamilton?
Did you want to point Chad out that we did do that thing with Sandy?
Absolutely.
I thought you were hitting me all over.
Yeah, I just, I'm jumping out of water there, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I will get you.
I, we need a motion for that, to accept that resignation.
Yeah, we will, we need a letter of resignation, we've received a letter of resignation from Sandy Hamilton for the Region Nine Planning and Development Council, so, I know that Sandy really enjoyed that board and was very productive with that board, but with her new appointment, she feels that she should not serve there, so, I guess we need a letter to accept, a motion to accept her resignation.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Now?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chad Weinbrenner to the Region Nine Planning and Development Council.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, it'd be great to have Chad on that board, like, I've, I talk about Region Nine in this commission a lot, Region Nine is one of those not very well-known boards, but they do a tremendous amount of work, they find a lot of money, they, they.
Manage a lot of money.
Manage a lot, they go after a lot of grants, they receive a lot of grants, they manage the grants, they do that for projects for the county, for the municipalities, it's, they, it's a very unique job out there, and the board is a large board, and it's a very active board, and I think Chad will be a great addition to that board, so.
They've done wonderful things for the new Inwood Park that's gonna be breaking ground here soon, believe me, so.
Yeah, and they are drastically underfunded from the state, they're, they drastically need more funding from the, from the state, but that's a discussion for another day.
Okay, we've been, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Chad Weinbrenner to Region Nine Planning and Development Council. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next up is board and commission interview with Brandon Franklin, a candidate for the Planning Commission. Come on up and state your name, sir. Good morning.
Good.
Good.
My name is Brandon Franklin. I was approached by Mr. Hardy here to apply to the Planning Board Commission, and I filled out the application, sent it in, appreciate your all's time.
Good, so what's your background, Brandon, and what do you think you can bring to the Planning Commission?
So, I'm a lifelong West Virginian, I was born in Martinsburg, I went to school locally. I've watched this community grow from what seemed like a one-stop-light town in Inwood to now a growing metropolis, and I want to be a part of that. I've recently had a daughter, and that's kind of enlightened me to try to help this community grow, and try to give her a better place to grow up than what I had, even though what I had was amazing, I think it could be even better, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Yeah, thank you, I like your optimism.
You look awful young, and if we go back to one-stop-light up there. I lived in Hedgesville, I'm seventy-two, and there's no stoplights from there to Martinsburg, now there's seven, so.
We'll talk twenty years ago, I mean, I think, I would, I consider it a one-stop-light town, you guys probably thought it was growing back then, I mean, look at it now.
Yeah. Mr. Boyd?
Well, I noticed that Mr. Hardy said they have a hard time getting a quorum there sometimes, correct? You got plenty of time to make the meetings and.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent dedicated?
Like I said, I have a newborn child, and I've made arrangements, I've, he said the meetings are on Mondays, I've secured a babysitter, and I will make as many meetings as I can.
All right.
So, I've known, I've known Brandon for quite some time, he's always been very active in our community, I met him when he was very young, and he was very enthusiastic about being involved in local politics and local community stuff, and I was on the Planning Commission before I went to Charleston, and now in this role, I oversee the Planning Commission, and it's, it's probably my favorite board that I'm on, it's a very active board, and a lot goes on, we do have trouble making quorum. I thought of Brandon, I know he's very enthusiastic about our community, he's very involved, he would make a wonderful member of that board, and I'm excited to, that you came to interview, I'm excited that you, you know, took my conversation, we ran into each other at Lowe's, and you took my conversation, and I'm excited for you to be a part of the Planning Commission, because we could use some youth on that board, we could use some youth on that board, and some enthusiasm, and with that comes new ideas, so I'm excited for that.
I really appreciate it, thank you.
Very good. Let's go.
I already told you I was seventy-two, and I went to an optometrist a week or so ago for the first time in my life, and I can't see out of my left eye now, and I can see Potomac on top, but what's it say underneath?
Potomac Carpentry, it's the company I opened about two years ago.
Potomac what?
Potomac Carpentry.
Okay.
Yep, I just opened that, so we're framing, framing labor business.
Okay, but I agree with John, I think we need to get, it's nice to have some young people get involved in some of these boards, that we appoint so many members to all these boards and get involved, and we appreciate the fact that you're willing to do that. You chose a good one, that's, that's an interesting board to be on, so.
I'm very excited at the opportunity, so.
Thank you for your willingness, thank you.
Brandon, you know, we do have subdivision regulations, you know, that are enforced, and sometimes there are gray areas, you know, that, you know, the staff sometimes will make a recommendation based on their expertise, and our staff is very, very good at what they do, but on occasion, you know, there is doubt or a question of the policy itself, perhaps, so, just trying to navigate through that and be fair, fair with the ordinance and fair with the people that are before you, because not everything is black and white sometimes, so, that's all I would ask, and you, I did not have an opportunity to speak with Sarah or Ryan, but John highly regards you and recommends you for this position, so, we're going to support that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Well, with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Brandon Franklin to the Planning Commission.
I'll second that, as long as you promise to keep Hardy under control.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
It was hard back in college, I'm sure it's even harder now.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Now, you'll need to get sworn in, if you can, when you leave, if you see our secretary over there, and make arrangements to get sworn in.
Yes, sir.
And we'll get you a schedule of the meetings, and I'll be in touch.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're right on the money, close to the money, anyway.
Next up, Chad Weinbrenner, Deputy County Administrator, employee paid time off, used while off on workers' comp.
Yes, sir, so, some history on this, for some time, there has been a practice within Berkeley County that has had employees that are off on workers' compensation, front-load their sick leave or now long-term leave, when the workers' compensation check came in, they would sign that over to the county, a manual calculation was done, and then a recredit was put back into their leave bank. That process has been troublesome on the administrative end, we've had issues in the past with trying to get the checks turned over to us, we've had calculation issues, and one of the biggest issues with that policy is it's not enshrined anywhere officially, either in your handbook or in any written policy. We have opportunities to continue to work and help make employees whole, we can write policy that does that, and I think we have an opportunity, if the commission has a desire, to cover that forty percent that workers' comp doesn't pay through new policy guidance, but the unofficial policy of what we've been doing to this point, I believe we should end. I don't think it's a good practice to continue to do the buyback program, if we're just simply trying to cover the uncovered portion of workers' comp leave, there are other ways that we can do that more successfully without having complicated buyback programs, the buyback could have negative consequences in retirement calculations, it could have negative tax consequences, and a lot of that falls back on the employee, so, we need to make sure that, you know, if we're allowing this, that number one, we have written policy that is across the board for all employees of the county, that is accessible to them and usable in the instance that they find themselves in the situation, and then the administrative staff and payroll needs to have firm direction and guidance on how to move in these situations, which none of those things are happening right now. So, staff is requesting the unofficial policy that we currently are practicing be discontinued immediately, and if you desire, we would come back to you with new policy to help keep employees whole.
Very good, I understand the complications with how this has been handled in the past, and.
I need more detail on how it has been handled in the past, just explain it.
So, if I go off on workers' compensation, my salary will be covered at sixty percent through workers' compensation.
Through workers' comp.
If I have enough accrued leave in my bank, I would elect to take my leave. When my workers' comp money comes in, when my check comes to me from workers' compensation, I then have to endorse the back of it, bring it into the office, and I would give it to Penny. Once that's done, Penny does a manual calculation, and correct me if I'm wrong with this, Penny, but Penny does a manual calculation based on what my hourly rate is versus how much the check is, and that amount of hours gets recredited into your bank. The problem becomes, there's a lot of things that have to happen, workers' comp has to pay on time, the employee has to be able to get the check in here, which if the employee is injured, that may or may not be possible. The leave calculations are different, we have, most of the county works under one set of leave, with long-term leave, your sheriff's department is still working under sick leave, there's a lot of variations in it, and a lot of things we kind of need to bring together to tighten up, that put expectations not only on administrative staff, but also put expectations on employees that are participating in the policy. Right now, there's really no expectation, there's no deadline, there's no guidance, there's no recourse if something goes wrong, so.
By doing it that way, they get a full paycheck, is what they're saying.
Yes, sir.
And then, what happens when it's an employee that doesn't have enough leave to?
So, that is actually, that's fairly common, and you recently had a scenario with one of your new firemen, one of the things that you all did this year that was very, received very well, is when we rolled out our new insurance packet, you included a short-term disability option for employees that they pay for. That option runs consecutively but separately from workers' compensation, so the employee can take it at the same time they're out on workers' compensation. We strongly encourage our new staff, especially our emergency services staff, to participate in that policy while they are building their leave bank. It's a, it would be a fantastic thing for them to do for the first three to four years of their employment, while they're kind of getting that cushion, because that's what these banks are for, they're for something, you know, unforeseen that puts them out, and as a former first responder myself, I can tell you that, and Commissioner Gokelar will say the same, the scariest thing to imagine is when you depend on your body to work, it doesn't work one day and you can't pay your bills, so, having that option for our staff is huge, and it was, it was taken advantage of in pretty large numbers this year, we had a lot of people sign up for that short-term disability.
Yeah, my thing is, I want to make sure that if one of our employees was hurt while they were working for us, that sixty percent from workers' comp is not going to pay their bills, and we don't want to put them in a position where they're going to lose a car, lose a house, not be able to make their payments or take care of their families, so, I'm okay with abolishing this unwritten policy, basically, as long as you come back, hopefully within a week or two, with the guidelines and guardrails to be able, for these folks to be able to be made whole, so that they don't find themselves in a financial crisis because of an injury while they were working. So, I understand that, and I know there has been abuse over time, and hopefully, the policy will prevent that and encourage folks to do what's right, you know, if you can, if you can do light duty, come back to work and work in a light-duty position, but, and I know your intent was not to hurt them at all, I know, I know that, but I want to make sure that our employees are taken care of when they're hurt, working for us.
Absolutely, we'll be back in front of you real soon with the policy. We'll be back in front of you real soon with the policy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Gokenhour. Certainly if we have an employee that is hurt and no workers' compensation and they're only receiving 60% of their pay, we want to make sure that we're keeping them whole. I think there's a better way to do it than the way we're doing it right now and I'm confident that you will come back to us with a program that will be acceptable for our employees and acceptable to us and look forward to seeing that. And, but I think it probably is time to move in a different direction and make sure that we're taking care of our employees, but also making sure that we're doing what's most financially prudent for the county.
Mr. President, so for purpose of clarification, a motion to cease and desist with the process that exists today, no more buyback.
Yes, sir.
Please, a motion because you are, it is personnel, so if you could take a motion and just stop that process.
Yes, sir. That's why I was going to just read off of your, the reference here was, I need a motion to discontinue the leave buyback policy for workers' comp claims. And I don't need any policy, but that's what I need. I need a motion to discontinue the leave buyback policy for workers' comp.
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to abolish the buyback program that we are now using. We recognize that we're going to develop a new policy.
I second it, but I have a question, discussion.
Sure.
Are these people currently?
I was going to say, right now, you currently do not have anybody on a buyback policy. So yes, your action today does not take anything away from me.
Okay. So if I'm making that motion and seconding, we're confident.
Yes.
Okay. You're good.
Very good. Motion approved. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Chad. And next is your impact fee schedule and ordinance approval.
Yes, sir. So in front of you and in your read ahead are two documents. You have the impact fee ordinance, which has had the proposed fees that we'll go over here soon, put into it. Following that, you also have the impact fee capital improvement plan and we'll go over that towards the end. But I just want to kind of lightly go over the impact fee ordinance and give you all an opportunity to ask any questions. So the impact fee ordinance is for new development. I know some questions that come up throughout the process as to whether or not the impact fees would be assessed on things like if a house burned down or was destroyed by a natural disaster. And the answer to that is no. This is for new development only. Replacement of existing structures would not be eligible for impact fees. As we go through, another thing I want to point out, the affordable housing discount is in there. It's on page four. The affordable housing discount is run off of Anthony, the. State Housing Index. So that sets the average price of homes in Berkeley County. Any house that would be built below that would qualify for a discount and there will be forms available for homeowners to apply for that discount when they come in to pay their impact fee. That obviously changes on a year-to-year basis, but basically if they build a house 10% below the affordable housing index, they get a 10% discount on their impact fee if you approve these. Those numbers change every year. They're published by the state, so the formula will change every year. Wanted to point that out. The first impact fee that we have on is for your public school impact fee. We are moving forward with assessing residential impact fees only and under those fees, we have three structures. We have a single family, a multifamily and a mobile home. These were numbers that were assessed through Tishler Bice based on the number of occupants that those structures generate over the lifetime at home. So your single family fee adjusted would be 1,095, multifamily 727 and mobile home The next fee on your list is the county administrative and facilities fee. The fee for that is single family 1,012, multifamily 719, mobile home 795. The next fee on the list is the fire and rescue. And the fee for single family is 1,300, multifamily 925, mobile home 1,023. And you will see that some of these, the multifamily and the mobile home are a bit off. So when it comes to things, you would expect the multifamily maybe to be more and the mobile home to be less, but in the terms of fire and rescue, it's not only calculated by the amount of people that that dwelling generates, it also is calculated by the demand of service that that dwelling generates. So Tishler Bice, when their, their calculations were trips. So when their calculations, more trips are generated for mobile homes for fire and rescue than for multifamily. So that's why the fee for mobile homes is slightly higher. So the impact of mobile homes is higher. The next fee is law enforcement. Single family 372, multifamily 264, mobile home 292. Again, same price structure as the fire fee. And then the final fee is your parks and recreation. Single family 1,721, multifamily 1,222 and mobile home 1,352. Those fees put together on a total has your single family total at $5,500, your multifamily total at $3,857 and your mobile home total at $4,122.
Say that again, 1,5500 is the first one. What's the next two?
Multifamily 3,857.
857.
Mobile home 4,122.
Chad, on multifamily, that's per unit, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So I should, I should have already known this or maybe we had the discussion and I don't remember, but how, how was it like because the fire and EMS are together in that, how will those dollars be separated out?
So those dollars are going to be held in a fund together. There is a fire and EMS fund as they're collected and based on the projects that those entities, the three entities that would be eligible for those funds would be the county commission is you, the ambulance authority and the fire board. As those entities have programs, they would come in and they would request money out of that impact fee. As long as that program is on the capital improvement plan, which we'll go over here in just a second, it may be eligible for impact fees. What we have to do then is decide what its eligibility is, how much of that program is adding capacity. And then the proportion of that facility or piece of equipment that is adding capacity is ineligible for impact fees. Ultimately, it is your discretion as to how that is paid out.
But there'll be calculations that go into that to see?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So a good, a good representation would be, just from where I came from, if I am moving from one EMS station that had a capacity to hold two ambulances and one full-time crew and I'm building a new station that can hold two full-time crews and four ambulances, I've increased my capacity by 50%. So that project is eligible, 50% of it can be covered by impact fees. Because it's a replacement, you can't cover the replacement costs. You can only cover the additional costs. But if I'm building a brand new station that has never been built before and it is adding because of added capacity, 100% of that could be covered, the same with equipment.
And we'll be able to show those calculations to the fire EMS and say?
Yes.
This is why station X is getting this and this is why station Y is getting this and there's clear calculations to show that.
Yeah, so every time they come in, we will do a calculation. We will take what they, we will take the requests they're given, we'll do the calculation, we will determine how much is eligible for an impact fee. This body will approve that and they will be given everything, the calculation, the rationale and all that. Parks and Recreation, we talked about putting lights on fields. It doubles in most cases the capacity of that field. So lights are a great investment for impact fees because you can add capacity. But we have to show that on paper. We have to do those calculations.
I think to answer your question, it is your discretion on how that money is spent.
Yes.
Three entities. There's no, and you could, my policy said, said, okay, we want to split a third and a third and a third, or you could say, we'll look at each request as they come. So if there's a million dollars in the fund and you have a million dollar request from each, it's up to you whether you divide it equally, whether you support just one, you'll do that at the point the time comes.
Well, and there's a couple, there's a couple of thoughts here, you know, like a medic unit is $350,000 today where a pumper is, you know, around 1.1, 1.2 million. You know, the pumper hopefully will, will last that department 20 to 20, 22 years maybe where the ambulance is, will have the wheels run off of it and probably seven or eight. So, you know, I just, I just want to make sure, I want to be very comfortable that, that our EMS and our fire are getting what they need, when they need it, as long as we have the funding to be able to do this. And, you know, it's, it's like, you know, being able to help with parks and rec like, like we've been wanting to do with some of their capital improvements moving forward, such as Steve has mentioned in the past about lighting or turfing those DuPont fields. You know, those are great opportunities, I think, at some point to be able to do that. So, and the other thing is as, as we move through this process, it's another opportunity that I see that we don't have to go back to the homeowners that are already here and ask for increases in those fees to be able to help subsidize and pay for the, the services that are being, you know, that are being rendered. So, you know, we've worked to try to get this in the past and we weren't successful and fortunately the legislature, you know, finally changed the law to allow us to do this. I will tell you that the public has been asking for this for quite a while. The recommendation for the fee from Tishler and Bice was 11,000.
Just shot 12,000 total.
Just shot 12,000. I think that at 5,500, I think that this commission has been very, they've listened to the public, they've listened to multiple agencies in trying to come to a consensus on a number that we could live with, knowing that annually we can readdress the fee structure and move those numbers however we need to do that. But there's been a lot of work that has gone into this. I know Chad, you've been at the point of this. You've answered our questions, even if you couldn't answer it that day, within a couple of days, you, you've gotten back to us. I appreciate your efforts there and, because this is, this is a heavy lift and it's, you know, it's the first, first time we've been able to accomplish this. So anybody else have anything they need to add or want to add?
Well, I would just, I'd like to address that the, when we, just to step back to the fire and EMS thing, that there is a, you know, to be able to physically break down those numbers, there's a math equation, there is, there's, we can show that we're being equitable. We're not picking winners and losers. We're not, this, this firehouse is getting this and this fires house not getting, you know, I just want to make sure that when we break that down, that we can show that there's a clear and concise breakdown of that that shows that why, why, who is getting what. And if we do decide to break it down, that fire gets, it's a third and, you know, but I don't know if that's really an equitable way to do it because of the cost of equipment and such.
Yeah, so when they calculated the fire EMS fee, there was three categories. There was land and facilities. There was fire equipment and then EMS equipment. And, you know, one of the great things is, you know, over the past 10-plus years, your, your fire and EMS is really coming together and consolidating a lot.
They have.
You have shared facilities all over this county and probably, you know, hopefully in my opinion, we've seen the, the last of these sole facilities. They, shared facilities serve the community very, very well. So when it comes to your buildings, there's really not as much concern and equity because the buildings that you're putting money into are going to serve the community and both of those two disciplines. When it comes to your equipment, that's a bit different because, you know, remember as Commissioner Gokenhour said, a piece of fire apparatus is three to four times more expensive than a piece of EMS apparatus, but that piece of EMS apparatus has to be replaced three to four times over the lifetime of that fire apparatus. So it almost washes. But your impact fees do not pay for replacement. They pay for addition. So we, we will have to look at those requests on a case-by-case basis. It's not going to be for equipment quite as simple as two buckets because your ambulances are turning over faster. A lot of what they're doing is replacing in the fleet so they are not going to have very many. Now, if they buy a larger ambulance or they have new equipment that can expand patient care, there'll be portions of that cost that's available. Whereas your fire apparatus is probably going to be a little more readily available because their fleet's undersized as it is. I know there's a lot of conversations about having some reserve engine storage places within the county and once that's set up, I think you'll see the fire fleet grow fairly significantly. And that's a little more cut and dry if you're adding to the fleet, so.
It's a, it's a, it's a good problem to have.
It's a.
Because now we have a source of revenue that we've never had before coming into their system because of the growth. That's going to allow us to have the opportunity to buy new apparatus, equipment for these two agencies and for the other entities that are mentioned here. And it's a wonderful thing. I'll do my Tony Coridi now. It's a good day to be a mountaineer. It's a good day to be Berkeley County and to get this thing finally. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. We've been working on it for two years now and it's just great to see it come to this point where we can motion today to get this thing implemented and in place, this ordinance. So I would love to make that motion.
Go right ahead, sir.
So I move that we proceed with the, and I appreciate Anthony and Gary and Chad and all the work you did to get to this point. Brian, I guess you'd be ready to start collecting fees here in a few months and get your act together over there. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance for the, for the impact fees and move forward.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Do you need one more motion from you? And let's go over the capital improvement plan very quickly.
Yes, sir.
This impact fee capital improvement plan will be presented to you on an annual basis. What is on this plan is the roadmap basically of what you can spend your impact fees on. This plan's a living document. It'll change year to year as the organizations that are involved add and subtract product or projects off of this plan. We went out to all the impact fee stakeholders this year and collected projects with the understanding that this plan was step one. We anticipate very little, if any, distribution from the impact fee funds this fiscal year. A lot of it's going to be collection and I think all the stakeholders are aware of This capital improvement plan, years down the road, will have historical documents, projects that were spent, projects that continue, where you're at in phases of impact fee dispersments for certain projects. But for year one, no expenditures, this is a pretty simple starting document, but it's important to know that you have to approve this on an annual basis.
It's still a pretty impressive document. I was spending some time with it and, and there's a lot of thought process that went in. I mean, and then we're kind of, you know, we don't really have any money to work with yet and this is kind of the, our starting jumping off point for our plan, but there's a lot of thought put into this. And I was going through this and thinking, wow, this is really a neat document to have and it's really well-prepared and the timelines and, and, you know, I hope we can accomplish all of this stuff and more, but thank you for whoever put this together. I'm not sure if that was you or?
It's Chad.
Chad, thank you for this, Chad. This is a very well-organized and shows great timelines and really breaks things down for us and, you know, obviously, like you said, it's a living document. Things are going to change and we may not hit all those parameters. We may hit some sooner, but I think this is a great jumping off point and I'm really glad to have this as a, as a window into the future and also be able to go back and look at this and say, well, this is where we started and this is where we are. And I think it's important for us as we move through this capital improvement plan that we are, try to keep the public informed as best we can and as well as they want to be informed on how we are spending this money, as we call growth paying for growth. But I think it's very important for us to be able to show how we're using that money in the projects that it's going toward. So thank you very much for that document.
Very good. I need a motion to approve the capital improvement plan for the impact fees.
So moved, Mr. President.
One second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Quite the, quite the lift there, Chad.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mr. Wyon, Budget Revision Number One for Fund 001.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the annual process to get into the new fiscal year, you have by the end of July to supply budget revision number one to the.
of July to supply Budget Revision Number One to the auditor's office. You'll recall, you, in the budget document back in the late winter, early spring, you, you budgeted $2,585,083 as to be your unencumbered fund balance. It actually is $4,282,476. So you need to realize $2,351,443. Of that, $654,050 is your assigned fund balance. Those are payments from the last fiscal year. Remember with Juneteenth and all of that stuff, you had some days, so the purchase order log was delayed. So $654,050 was, were actually encumbrances from the last fiscal year that didn't get paid, so they got paid after July 1. So essentially, you have an extra $1,697,393, 1,000, 1,697,393, and I'll walk you where I'm proposing that goes. The first one is $5,000 increase to account 416. That was a typo by me for the budget for the court martial, so if you see fit to go ahead and give them the $5,000 that you already allocated. The second one, and Brian's in here to make sure I do this, a typo by me for Department 439 planning, I shorted them $35,000, essentially all of his operating monies when I keyed the budget in, so to increase account 439 by $35,000. Department 442, which federal grants, I'm proposing that you front-load that department by $100,000, as well as 443 state grants by $100,000. Steve, we're caught up in a situation now where we get some monies from the legislature to go to, we don't have money in the budget, so we have to get it there first and spend it. This just kind of front-loads a little bit there, so it makes those transactions a little faster. You budgeted $208 into your contingency account, which is Department 699, I'm proposing you put $1,222,318 in there for any unforeseen changes you want to do throughout the fiscal year. It'll give you some opportunity to have some monies to say, how can we do that? Department 711, which is your fire department, when you made all of the personnel changes, I made the mistake and forgot to budget the $10,000 for the three additional employees you did at the end, so $30,000 in there to true-up their insurance line item. Department 812, which is your recycling center, if you'll recall, last year, you funded a portion of the temporary position for them to cover Mr. Hoggman's efforts. When they asked this year, when they made the request this year, that wasn't in the, in writing. They have since asked that you fund that fully at $84,125, so it would increase the 50,000 you already have in the recycling to make their annual 134, 125. And lastly, $975,000 in the Department 988, which is your construction budget. And my next item that we're going to discuss, you'll see where I'm proposing we spend a piece of that, 975,000. So total reallocation, $2,351,443.
Okay. Need a mo, need a motion to approve Revision One and Fund Zero Zero One.
That, that additional increase there does cover the recycling center and solid waste requests.
It does.
In full.
In full, yes, sir.
I, I'm ready, prepared to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of our county administrator in regards to these increases.
Been properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And Gary, next up, Animal Control Expansion Project.
So whether you've been on the bench or in the public or driven down Queen Street, you're, you're doing the efforts of animal control in a building that's been the same size and the same place for several decades. You've seen expansions in every other building that you own to accommodate the efforts that you have. Sheriff Blair sent me an email as he was recovering from hip surgery and said, hey, we need help down here. And we immediately started to look at it, and, and you have a preliminary drawing of what the expansion would look like to give them an additional, to actually take them to 60 kennels. Right now, you struggle, you struggle with keeping the building cool enough, you struggle with keeping it hot enough, it's just not what it needs to be. So preliminary estimates are all-in, about $525,000 for that expansion. It would be, it would be a, a pole building construction, so not a lot of excavation. You're on top of a quarry, you're right beside a quarry right there, and it is all rock, so short of the small footings that you would need. So the most cost-effective kind of construction that you could do, ideally be great to do it somewhere else, but you're not in a position right now to have somewhere else to go create a new facility. This is a good fix. I've discussed this casually with the sheriff, with Chief Jones, this is just step one. This isn't the final drawings, but this is just the concept, set a budget, and the, get the direction from the commission if you want to move forward with it, but it is, is long overdue and very, very much in demand.
What was the cost again, Gary? 500?
525,000.
For how many square feet?
It is
5200.
5200.
Pretty cost-effective square feet.
You can't beat it. You're, you're in the construction business yourself, you know, right? This also creates a Sally Port for them. Right now, they load and unload dogs, or cats, or whatever, we don't take cats, but we do on occasion, right? Out back, it's, it, we set them up for stress and, and failure with what they're doing. This is going to give them an adoption room, you know, come in, you want to adopt something right now, I'll get down there, man, I'm afraid I'll have 55 dogs in my house, but it's tough, it's tough. So this also provides outdoor space for every kennel. They don't have that liberty now. So if they need to clean the kennels, which they do daily, they have to remove the animal out, put it somewhere else, and bring it back. This will provide outdoor space for every kennel. Open it, put the animal outside, clean the space, bring the animal back in.
You think this buys us another five years, 10 years?
I'd say 10.
10, because I mean, eventually, we're going to need, we're going to need a new facility, and a much larger facility if we continue to grow.
You, this doesn't do it. I think this buys you enough room to breathe. We've had some discussions with other government agencies around that may, may have some property available, we might be able to do something with, but nothing that's going to move as fast as the sheriff needs it. Right now, you've had two seizures in the last three weeks, you're housing 35 animals off-site right now. You're housing more off-site than you have on-site, so it, it's just, for lack of a better term, it's a hot mess, and they need help. This gets us started, the projection is about a year timeframe by the time the plans are drawn, project's done, but I think it works well, it'll look nice, and it serves the purpose. Sheriff was more than excited when I met with him, but there's a lot of meetings to happen before it's over, but if the commission chooses to fund it, we can get started ASAP.
Do you, so you need a consensus, or do you actually want a motion?
I, I'd like a motion to approve maybe a not-to-exceed 525, please.
That will come out of the 900 and some thousand.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion to approve not-to-exceed 525,000 for the Animal Control Expansion Project.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
That won't be publicly bid, so.
Sure.
This is the last time you hear about it.
Right. Do we have a reason for executive session? We do not. Very good. Okay. Need a motion to recess.
Mr. President, I move we recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.